This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Ms. Allen, will you call the row?
Yes. Mr. Longton?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Can we stand for the pledge? Of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, the Constitution, and the Constitution of our own.
The Board of Education will read the mission statement together. The mission of the Triwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by an innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere. Next. On the agenda, uh, is to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes?
Yes, I do have one change. Under Superintendent's item, um, excuse me, Superintendent's report, I'd like to add item D for information approval of a field trip of a, excuse me, of a out-of-state overnight field trip to Atlanta, Georgia, uh, for Triwood Madison High School students from February twenty-seventh through twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. I'll share the details, uh, when we get to that agenda item, and that is for information.
Okay. I need a motion to adopt the agenda with the changes.
I motion.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Mr. Longton?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes to adopt the agenda with changes. Item two, board report.
Under item two, board report, everyone should in front of them have a, uh, copy, summary copy, excuse me, of the Fall twenty-twenty-four policy update. This will serve as the first reading for the, for the policy. Looks like, looks like this. It's not in your folder. It may be on the desk. Okay, you might put it in your folder. Okay. Uh, a- as we do with policy, this is the first reading. The summary gives a, a detailed, uh, report, condensed detailed report of all of the policies that are either under revision, uh, there's small technical corrections, or new policies. Uh, just highlighting a few, uh, policy fifty-one thirty-one on the second page. Policy has been advised to reflect provisions in House Bill forty-seven that allow students who are victims of abuse to transfer athletic ab- athletic eligibility if they transfer schools with no penalty. Uh, policy fifty-one, fifty-one thirty-six in, uh, correlation with House Bill two-fifty, which we'll talk about a little later, but we also talked about a little earlier in the year, must, uh, the school district must adopt and implement a policy that governs, governs cell phone use. Uh, and policy fifty-one thirty-six oh-six along those same lines, uh, a policy must be adopted that, that govern, that govern, excuse me, school issued devices. Attendance policy has been updated. Policy fifty-two hundred, uh, with regards to, uh, allowing free religious expression days. It details what those are and what that, you know, what, what that information is. Um, policy sixty-three twenty, uh, for, uh, the folks in operations is, is one that a lot of operations folks are excited about. Uh, it moves the public competitive bidding threshold to, from seventy, excuse me, from fifty thousand dollars to seventy-five thousand dollars, and then there will be an increase of three percent every year as determined and published by the Director of Commerce. And then there are others, some other, uh, policies, vendor relations, cellular, cellular, excuse me, telephone allowances, born-on-technology, staff use of communication devices. Uh, another interesting one, policy seventy-five forty, artificial intelligence, this is a new policy. This policy has been added to address the use of A.I. by district staff and students. Anticipate this policy will evolve as the tools evolve, so districts must develop, uh, some type of monitoring and guidance for the use of A.I. Um, policy ninety-one sixty, policy has been advised to reflect changes adopted by the legis- legislature in House Bill one forty-seven impacting the cost of admission for school-affiliated events, including discounts for students enrolled at schools participating in the event. So, uh, ninety-one sixty directs districts that they now must have tiered cost adults and students. Uh, there were a lot of districts, us possibly being one of them in the past, that charged the standard fee, so, uh, for entry into games, uh, or athletic events, now there have to be tiered costs for those. So, uh, with those, you can review, um, review the, the summary and also make reference to the policy, policy document on board docs if you have any questions about those, um, those policies that are being, uh, being updated.
Item three, the treasures report.
I only have one item this evening for information, and that is the approval of the January ninth organizational meeting minutes, the January ninth work session meeting minutes, and the January twenty-third regular meeting minutes. And again, that was just for information.
Okay. Item four, the superintendent's report.
Do have just a few items for information this evening. The first, item A, under superintendent's report, approval of the junior ROTC out-of-state field trip, out-of-state, excuse me, overnight field trip to Flint, Michigan for the North Central Drone, Drone Competition, May eighteenth through twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. And in your tab, there's a little more information from, uh, Colonel Graves about the competition. And that is for information this evening. Requesting approval for item B, the equipment share, um, company located at Two Stratocash Way, Triwood, Ohio donated coats and hygiene items for students, for students for Triwood Madison City Schools. These items will be kept at the Board of Education Claire Care Closet and will be distributed to schools and families when they request assistance. I think this is the second, uh, donation we've had with regards to the equipment share. Asking for approval on that next meeting. Item C, approval of the personnel agenda, I am, excuse me, I am asking for action on that this evening. Personnel agenda was sent out last Friday, very, very small personnel agenda under, um, human resources separation of services, a couple of resignations, couple of appointments for substitute teachers and after-school food service, and then two supplemental positions for Westbrook Village and Madison Park. Very small personnel agenda, and I am asking for approval on that this evening.
Excuse me, Mr. Howard, item B, is that information or for action?
Which one? What'd you say?
With the equip.
Equipment shares for information. Equipment shares for, I'm sorry for that confusion. Equipment shares for information and personnel will be, I am asking for action on the personnel.
Um, equipment shares listed as action on the agenda.
If you guys are okay with approving that tonight, then we can.
Yes.
Okay.
So let's go back to subject B. Um, I need approval of the equipment share donation.
I'll second.
Ms. Allen, it's been moved to second. Will you call the row, please?
Yes, Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Longton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes for the approval of equipment share donation.
And then coming back to C, asking for approval of the personnel agenda this evening.
So we've had an opportunity to review the personnel agenda prior to this meeting. Are there any questions? Ms. Kilgore, any question? So I need approval of the personnel agenda. I need a motion.
A motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Longton?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes. Motion passes for the approval of the personnel agenda.
And the last item I have for information is item D, which is the hand-carried item. I've provided everyone a summary of the request for a out-of-state overnight field trip to Spelman College. Uh, this opportunity came in late. Uh, we have a, a staff member who, whose daughter is, uh, works in community relations for the Atlanta A.U.C., and they reached out and asked if we would be interested to, interested in bringing some young ladies to Spelman College and to visit other, um, the other universities in the Atlanta University Center. Ms. Cherry has some questions that I, I've got to get, uh, some information with, with some information for her or for, for the board about, uh, the, the funding source, how the kids are going to get there, how, um, how, who, how are they going to be, who's going to be responsible for the room? So I will get all that information prior to the next meeting and, and share that with the board. So I'm, I'm giving you this as, again, as a bit of information, and then I'll provide that information and share with the board, and then hopefully we can vote, vote on it next meeting.
And who did you say the organization was? Mr. Howard, you said A.U.C.?
The Atlanta University Center is the, the, the three colleges that are in, in, uh, in Atlanta, downtown Atlanta, Morehouse, Clark Atlanta, and Spelman. And, uh, John Liffke, he's one of our, our P.E. teacher at the middle school. His daughter is, um, works for the Atlanta University Center, and they, they kind of reached out and, and just told us they had some opportunities for some, for some kids to, to come down and visit. And this coincides with Spelman's, um, preview day. Coincide, coincides with their preview day for, uh, incoming, incoming students.
Are the eleven student seniors, or have we identified them?
Grade eleven.
Grade eleven.
Grade eleven. It's going to be open up, opening, they hope to get twenty to twenty, twenty, twenty-five, maybe, maybe, excuse me, fifteen to twenty, but if they have more that, that qualify, then they'll, they'll take more.
How many have we identified so far?
I think they have fifteen.
That was one of my questions.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think they have fifteen that they've identified so far, and they're, they're looking to open it up, open it up to, um, to more young ladies.
And if, if any reason, we just opened it up to female students? Because Morehouse and Clark Atlanta, we have.
And Morris Brown, right?
Well.
Well, because of the Spelman.
Well, because the, the preview day is for Spelman.
But if we're going to visit all three, why wouldn't we take that opportunity? Because I'm a boy mom, I'm despised. Um, why can't we open it up for our male students as well?
The, the activity, the, the whole day activity is, is for Spelman. There, the visiting, the other colleges would be a part of the Spelman tour. Am I making myself clear?
So, it, what Deion said, so could we get a tour guide for the other colleges for male students? I think if we have this type of opportunity, I would like for both, both genders to be able to experience this.
Spelman's an all-girl school.
They're right there, they're next door.
Understood, but Spelman made the invite.
Well, the, yeah, the, the college preview day that they, that they're focused on is Spelman, but they're going to visit the other, yeah, the other schools.
And they're not, there, there's the preview day, but they're not paying for it.
Right.
They're not funded, and it would be come from, what would the funding, because if we're paying for it, for fundraising, I would like to see both male and female schools be a part of it.
And maybe we can reach out to the other schools so that we can give the young men something, though.
Absolutely.
Well, I will follow up with the, the individual that was planning the trip, and as you can see, the, the, I believe the preview day for Spelman is the twenty-seventh.
I wouldn't want.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want males to miss this opportunity.
So I'll follow up.
I think, I'll reach out to Morehouse and see what they would want to do.
Would they make it?
Um, since, mm-hmm, and then we have Clark Atlanta and Morris Brown, as Mr. Jones has stated, so they're.
I'll volunteer Charlie to reach out to Clark Atlanta, and if, if we have a group of twins kids coming down, they could, from Ohio, they could.
And, and I think we can work with, uh, Mr. Lips, Mr. Liffke's daughter as well, because she works with the, the entire group. So I, so we'll see, you know.
Isn't it based upon Spelman's?
That was the original intent, yes. That was the original intent.
So, so shouldn't, so the reason why I'm asking is that the research should be if the other colleges are having something similar to Spelman on the same issue?
Right, we, we're going to have to find that information out.
Yeah, but I don't think it has to be similar.
If they're across the street, I miss an opportunity, not even across the street. Well, you might miss that opportunity. All we have to do is ask, coming from Ohio, they will open up for twenty kids.
I'm not seeing that they want, but we want to make sure that they have some sort of organized activity.
Absolutely. We could ask.
Yeah, it, it's on the weekend, so I'm sure, you know, we can, we can find something out, so.
And why is it just open to the elementary, maybe some lack of knowledge, and why is it open to seniors?
Well. I, I don't know that. It, it may be the preview day. It may be the preview day for juniors. I, I don't know. I have to.
I'm not thinking because too, maybe because seniors right now probably should already know what they're going by this time. When, when is this trip going to take?
The twenty-seventh.
That's a, that's a, that's a.
That's, that's a good question. I, I'd have to get that information.
I'll send you these listed questions.
Please, yeah, please send them.
You had them out.
Yeah, she writing them down for me. But, you know, with, if we, if we do still plan to coincide with that, that Spelman preview day, we will have to, I'd have to get all that information to you by the next meeting, and then, uh, we can approve it that next meeting.
I don't know about like, I don't know about tying Charlie down to do something. I'm not sure that Deion has the schedule to be able to just tie him down to towards some high school students.
Well, thank God that Mr. Um, Howard can get in touch with the young lady at the A.U.C. and get this all figured out for us.
So I will follow up. You got those questions for me? I'll make sure I follow up. All right. That's all I had.
Okay. Discussion item, um, discussion item five, um, the procedural response for immigrant executive order.
Okay, uh, I, I do have a few discussion items, uh, for you guys. If you make reference to your, your folder, as, as always. The first item A is in your, excuse me, in your folder, there is, uh, there's several, several documents. The first document that I'm actually going to take a look at is labeled as A. It is a immigration policy update. This was, this information, excuse me, was sent out to parents via parent square just to, um, I, I would say in a sense, kind of settle nerves with regards to the president's executive order for, um, for immigrants that may be classified as, as illegal. So we put together just a small bulleted, bulleted item that we shared with parents just to let them know what, what our, our legal respons- responsibility is. And then the second page is a, a F.A.Q. for school employees that may be in the crosshairs per se, if this, uh, this situation would ever take place. And I just wanted to share with the board that, that we did, uh, work with our attorneys, and the, um, the biggest point of, of contention really is if this would ever happen, how would we respond? And I just wanted to make sure that all of our staff was on the same page and understand what we actually have to do versus what people believe we have to do. And it all kind of hedges on the type of warrant if there is ever a situation, the type of warrant that is presented. So we've got some guidelines in place, uh, we worked with our attorneys to prepare this. All of that information is on the second page. We sent just a general summary home to parents just to reassure them that all children are welcome in Triwood Madison City Schools, and we're going to do everything we can to protect their right to a free and appropriate public education and their privacy with, within the law that, uh, that is established. So that's a document for you to, for you to review and handle. But this was sent home to all, to all parents via parent square.
Just out of curiosity, did we see any of our Hispanic kids not come to school two weeks ago? Because I know some of my families that I work with, they didn't send their kids to school.
Not that I'm aware of. Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Are we aware of any incidents that happened around our.
They, they kept it at home. Two of my families.
There have been some rumors.
Because they, I was hearing that some kids went home and there were no one there in some places.
Yeah, so as of now, we have not had any.
And when that happened, one of the children's services came along?
Yes. It's a scary time.
Okay, so, uh, moving on to the discussion item B, Athletic League update. Uh, we had a meeting with, um, the, the two other, um, two other districts today. Uh, Mr. Smith, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you want to give a real brief summary of that meeting and what, what the plan is going forward?
So, um, list steps are, excuse me, list steps are complete for twenty-five, twenty-six through year, these four foundations for twenty-six, twenty-seven through year. They both keep going to have internal meetings, uh, best thing, um, to discuss, uh, values of all, um, about how the commissioner for the league has, uh, brought us to another item, and we're going to reconvene, uh, on, uh, February the twentieth, all three school divisions to get back together, and we want to start, and I have to think that I will go about posting position for commissioner for the league, as well as, um, three together bylaws, and rules and regulations, and everything moving forward, and then all three boards, the school divisions, we can wear, uh, and that's coming up.
On the twentieth, will you be the only one, um, the representative for Triwood?
No, so, so today with you, Mr. Howard, and you, uh, they both schools, it was, uh, the district manager, Dr. Jones, uh, very good, uh, Dr. Lawrence, the super teacher, and then the council school, uh, their super teacher, uh, Dr. Pepper, the, and all of us will be back today. Each, yes, they have two of their, uh, it's, uh, all of them, uh, and that's it.
Yeah, it is a very, very productive meeting, uh, but.
I have a question about, I have a question about the bylaws and how involved we are in the writing process of them. So how, how is that working? Because I know you initially provided them with a blueprint to how to get to bylaws, but like, how involved are we in writing those? And in those bylaws, do we plan on having any structure for expansion? So if somebody else wants to join?
We talked about expansion, you know, and, yeah, they're very much open to expansion, um, and through the collective effort with all the schools, and we're going to.
And, and I think today, we, we made it very clear, um, myself, Mr. Logan, and Mr. Smith, that we want to be a integral part of this league, we just don't want to be another s- one of their schools. We want to be Triwood Madison, we want to represent ourselves as, as our own district, and we want to be a part of the league, but we want to have as much say and as, and as, you know, and as, as much, I hate to use the word power, but as much power collectively as a group, as anyone. And, and I think, uh, we made that very clear within the day.
In, in the spirit of expansion, what discussions are you having about changing or coming up with the new league name and logo?
Didn't get to that yet. Didn't get to that yet. That would probably be in one of those, the, the work session upcoming, having that dialogue and conversation. The major, ma- major focus today was, we, we worked our way through that conversation about the bylaws, about the, about the structure. And I, and I think the next working session, we can start bringing some of those, some of those additional questions up, but we, we did have some, uh, some dialogue amongst ourselves about, about that.
One last question. The academic portion of the league, so the academic challenges, have we come up with the cri- have, have they come up with the criteria, what the educational focuses would be on those, or dates for any of the, of the challenges or?
So we determined that we were going to leap into that next year, so we have, again, we have some time to, to prep ourselves for some of the things that they already have established, and then some of the things we may like to bring to the, uh, to the league with regards to academic components. But we're, we, we wanted to give ourselves enough time to be prepared as we head into, head into the, uh, the fall of twenty-five with regards to Quizbows and science fairs, those, those types of things, because we anticipate being a part of, a part of all of that. I don't know if that answered your question.
It does.
Okay. And Mrs. Murdock, and her team met with, you, you can go ahead, Ms. Murdock.
Yeah, we met, uh, at the first one team in December, I made public statements, and we talked about our school team event, so we did the class fair, and, uh, Tuesday, and and, um, and we went and our school, uh, and we talked about what in that next year, we're going to try to, uh, the third, some of those events, and we, uh, a week or there, but, and their event, they had no place to, so we didn't go in there, so, uh, to allow ourselves that time, and their, so, and, uh, the list of their events, uh, rules, um, and regulations.
Who will be responsible for paying for the commissioner?
So each school will talk about that, but, so what I shared with them was how a long way to go, uh, from our previous experiences, as well as talking to, um, links the last couple of, uh, what do they think about commissioner? So, we were talking about, say, nineteen thousand, some five thousand dollars for a new position for a lady. So each, one of the big schools will have huge, uh, degree here, and we have it right now with about six thousand dollars for schools, uh, to handle these issues. And so that, that money will go towards the commissioner as well as, um, awards for all these honors and league championships, that's to pay back to the faculty, uh, having fresh wheels out, uh, and, uh, so. I kind of laid out, yeah, I kind of laid out, uh, everything for, uh, both of your kids in my previous experience, and I think they got it, and you saw these kids, so, um, they understand that, um, each school will be responsible for this.
Mr. Jones, question. So for the commissioner, how will you guys go about choosing the commissioner?
So that position is posted.
Okay.
And then, um, all the schools, we will interview, and then, and then we'll say whatever.
So all eight schools, not just the three school districts?
Me, you are best, but.
Okay. Because I'm, I'm thinking if you do all eight schools, that means the city of Dayton will have a little more leverage over who we're choosing. So, I'll be the.
And remember, we, we did talk about this, um, because when I was down at the state of public school, we had just the super teacher program.
Yes.
And we involved in, um.
Highbreak. Okay.
So, um, that's something we're going to discuss on the, on the, as well, and, and so, um.
Yeah.
I'm just talking about organization.
Yeah. And, and there's going to have to be some, uh, some priorities that we identify that, you know, the, the, the administrators kind of deal with in a sense versus, you know, on the level of the building level, the A.D.s, coaches, and, and I think, again, establishing ourselves as a equal partner, not just another, another team is, is my priority.
And I think that starts with choosing the commissioner and make sure that everybody has a equal, yes.
I'm biased.
Yes.
Yes.
Are there, are there criteria?
Are there, are there criteria in place for who the commissioner can be, their affiliations to any of the districts? This qualifying factor?
It should be, yes.
I was thinking that in my head.
Not as a commissioner, but to come in and kind of lay the foundation, um, I think that the, the, we're hoping to, um, use the, here now or maybe how, uh, his personal consultant. So, um, it was, uh.
So, there are still some, there's still some details that we have to, we have to work through. You know, and our, our goal is to, to make sure we, our voices as loud as anybody else.
Absolutely, that, that, that would be my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Jones, and thank you also.
I need you to print something for me. I thought I'd say that in open session, so it's on the public record. I need something printed, I gotta send it to you.
So, uh, moving through discussion items, uh, D, President Cherry asks for an update of the Drive to Succeed grant. I have a summary email denoted as C. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me go back. C is, is Fast For Update. So, in your, in your, um, your folder, I have a document identified as D. Excuse me, the, the letters are off a little bit, D. And this is a, just a summary of what, what we have done initially, what the high school has done initially to start, uh, working with families and students to, uh, to get Fast For Completion. So, uh, November twenty-fourth, uh, the Fast For ID Creation Day is with all seniors. January twenty-fifth, they, they, uh, the high school counselor staff started their, what they call their Fast For Fridays in partnership with the Equal Educational Opportunity Center, Center. Tanya Bolt Miller is the liaison for the completed Fast For appointments. The upcoming appointments, you see the previous appointments, the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth. Upcoming appointments are the thirty-first, the seventh, and the twenty-first, and then there will also be some days in March. Um, sharing the, uh, information with the, uh, Montgomery County E F C, E S C to help, uh, get the Fast For information and the, um, applications in the libraries. Offering individual help to seniors on our, on caseloads, counselors' caseloads. Currently, year-to-date progress is not where we needed to be. It's, it's actually about twenty-one percent. This is a couple of, uh, couple of days ago. So, um, we, we've gotta keep working on this. This is something that, um, that I, uh, I'm gonna go over and meet with the, meet with the high school counselors and meet with, um, Mr. McCray to discuss. Uh, we still, you know, we still have time, but at this point, we, we should at least see fifty, fifty-five, sixty percent of our kids that have completed the Fast For. Uh, excluding those kids that, you know, that already, uh, have completed pathways or are going, you know, a career tech route or something like that. But in general, that is, that is a low completion percentage. And, and another thing I need to do is I need to gauge where we were last year at this time and get a. Yeah, I need to get a, I need to get a little better understanding of where we were last time. And, and then, you know, work directly to try to, uh, try to put together some, some, some outreach strategies to, to parents and families to, to get these kids, uh, get these kids to complete this application.
Is there designated time during the day for them to complete it or?
I, I think the, and, and, and I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna base it on the assumption when I was over there and I, I, I inquired. I think the kids have the opportunity to come down during lunch and complete their Fast Fours and then after school to complete them. Because there were several kids, not several, five or ten kids that I saw that were, uh, in the counseling office, working through, working through that process.
And then is there an opportunity for us to use our more popular attended events to be able to have a counselor available? Like a home basketball game or something like that and say, hey, you can also complete your Fast For while you're here?
That's a great idea.
You know, just something outside of the box so that we can engage our parents where they are?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great idea. And I, I'll be over there tomorrow and we'll, we'll, we'll have some, some conversation about. Yeah, we'll have some conversation about, uh, this completion rate and, uh, I'll update you, you guys on some of the things that we.
But we have to remember that we, we didn't receive this information a year ago. We don't know like, but, but. Right, but we don't know where we were last year. We could've been at six percent a year ago, but we weren't given the information to know to ask questions, to come up with ways to engage our parents to get the information done, yeah.
What, what I will say is, I, I'm, I'm aware of the percentage now and we've gotta work on, uh, we've gotta work on getting better.
So, there's a, one more thing about this though, like, you have a calendar of events that you're gonna read to us at the end that we have in our information.
Right.
Maybe we should find some of these sessions that they're having in the school and make Fast For available at these sessions that people are coming to. Even things like black history programs where it's a lot of parents that are like, you gotta think about ways I would get our parents.
Just hope for fast events where they, they can specifically come to do that.
Right.
I like your idea better because they're already there.
If they're coming for basketball, they're not about to say, do that.
And it, and it's a dedicated group too. It's a, a, identified specific group of senior parents.
So, do you think that zero percent of people would do it?
I'll just, I mean, I don't know. We just have to see.
Because if we're eighteen, if one percent of people do it, we're at nineteen.
Mr. Harris said we're really at twenty-one.
Yeah, it's, it's about, yeah, there've been a few more, there've been a few more that have completed. But, but again, I, you know, this is something that I'm just kinda getting my hands around now. And, uh, I, uh, I assure you that we're going, we're gonna put some things in place to try to, uh, not try, but to work to get, to get more kids, uh, filling out this Fast For.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Hey, no problem.
This is tough, huh?
All right, man, you know what? It's all good. Not that tough.
You sure you want that hot seat down there? Item D.
Okay, um, item D, Drivers Education Grant. I have another document for you, a summary from Jill Adams that outlines the, the, um, current status of kids that have completed the, the Drivers Training through, uh, the, the Drivers Education Grant. Uh, we have, currently, we had one student finish the lessons that had started the school year and have one more signing up now. Have six slots to use by the end of the year, so there are six available slots. Uh, we emailed, there are five interested students, but they either don't have a permit yet or haven't signed up for the online coursework. Those are the things that they have to complete prior to getting the grant funds. So, uh, she, she, as in Mrs. Adams, is working on trying to make sure that those kids have the, uh, have the resources to, to get the, the online training done, the permit training per se. And then she, we're also gonna post in the Google Classrooms to remind folks that we do have, um, we do have the, the Drivers Ed Grant available. One thing we are finding with this though, that there seem to be a lot of kids, cause I was over there the other day and I just asked a couple of kids about Drivers Ed. They just, they're just gonna wait till they're eighteen. They're just gonna wait till they're eighteen years old and then get their driver's license. It, it doesn't appear to be the, the priority that it used to be years ago. It, I mean, you know, years ago, sixteen years old, you get your driver's license, but with Uber and public transportation, these, it just, these kids are just, you know, and I'm, and I don't wanna generalize because there are some kids that, that wanna take advantage of this, so. But just from my initial conversation and some of the, the conversation I've had with some of the adults, you know, my, my son's college roommate, he's gonna, when he gets back from, from college in the summer, he said, I'm just gonna take my driver's test when I get home. You know, eighteen years old, you don't have to go through all this stuff. You can just, you can just go and take the driver's test.
Yeah, I've heard some kids that don't meet the GPA requirement.
That's also, yeah, that, yeah, there is a GPA requirement for this as well.
I didn't get my license until I was eighteen, so.
I just, I just don't like missed opportunities. There's five slots available, so I just, I just, I just don't like missed opportunities. When you know people can't, families really can't afford, because we paid a lot of money for Charlie to go to driving school. So, some families can't afford that, so you know, families, it's a need, yes.
So, we're, we're gonna push it though. We, we do, you know, she did say that we were gonna repost every, excuse me, in every, uh, eligible fifteen or sixteen-year-old's Google Classroom. So, that will update them. And then, uh, she does have, we do have five interested students, so we're gonna try to reach back out.
Do we know what's hindering them from getting their temporary permits? Because maybe if it's money, maybe we could donate.
And pass the permit test.
Yeah, passing the test and then even getting out there to take it, but.
Yeah, for transportation.
Yeah, so, so we, we, we had to, we had to dig into that a little deeper.
Maybe, uh, is this information posted on Parents Group?
Yes, we posted this on Parents Group at the high school several times. But it's for, you know, a specific group of kids too, because you have to, you have to meet the application criteria as well. Okay, E, cell phone policy. Uh, Mrs. Cherry wanted me to update the board on the, um, the cell phone policy. So, in your folder identified as document E is a, just an update from the Ohio School Board Association that summarizes House Bill two fifty. We talked about two fifty earlier in the year where districts had to, um, adopt policy or create policies that identified the governor's initiative to, uh, pretty much eliminate cell phone usage during school hours outside of possibly some lunch provisions after school, before school. We already had a policy that was in place that was revised on, uh, August fifth of twenty nineteen. So, I, to the memo, I've attached a copy of that policy for your review. We, um, at the close of, excuse me, as, as COVID was ending, we purchased the, the Yonder Pouches. We, uh, did that in the high school, middle school, and Westbrook Village. And we have seen, uh, we've seen some success with those Yonder Pouches. What is, is wild and bizarre, but is the nature of, of a capitalistic society. The Yonder Pouch's cost has gone up almost two hundred percent. With the, with, with the relation to the, to the cell phone policies and, and the governor's bill, supply and demand kicked in and the Yonder Pouches have gone from, I think we were paying a, maybe we paid, I can't remember exactly, eleven thousand dollars for three buildings, something to that extent. I think now it was like twenty-four thousand. It, it was, it was, it was crazy. So, what we've done is after this year, we are not gonna purchase any of the Yonder Pouches. We believe, our principals believe that the, the mindset is there that if you have your cell phone out, you will be addressed. And then we've also sent information home to all parents, letting them know, letting them know that this is now law. It is not a Triwood Madison rule, it is the law. And we have seen a significant reduction in cell phone violations and offenses. We still have some, but we've seen that, we've seen a significant reduction because we think a culture has been created that we no longer have to depend on an expenditure for a, a resource or a piece of equipment for, uh, for kids to put their cell phones in. Any questions on that? We say as long as they're put away, as long as we don't see them, we don't, you know, we don't chase it down. And that is it for the, for the discussion items this evening.
Does anyone have any questions? Item number six, treasurer comments.
I had several com- comments tonight, um, and I'm just gonna read it cause I wrote it down. I had an awesome experience today, um, reading to the third graders at Madison Park and, and Miss Candace, Candace Hester's room. They were attentive, engaging, and knew why we were celebrating Black History Month. It was an awesome experience for me. Um, they were very decisive on who they were voting for at this Sunday's Super Bowl game. Um, so, so it, it was just wonderful. It was, it's a good exchange. They were all attentive. It, it, it was, it was a very good uplifting experience for me. Uh, my February update is in front of you, um, it looks like this. Um, and I also attached it to the exec tab in Board Docs. There are three items that I highlighted and then at the bottom, there's a meeting and events, um, section as well. Then the third item, I just wanted to give a shout out to Ryan Allen for the article that appeared in the Montgomery County College Promise Newsletter. She's a graduate, she graduated in twenty-twenty from Triwood and obtained a degree from Wright State University in twenty-twenty-four. I mentored her for four years, meeting with her weekly to discuss various topics. So, I was very excited. Actually, she, she texted me to say that the, um, the article was coming out. I mean, we should be really, really proud of her. Ryan also is the daughter of Jennifer Allen, who's the, um, high school clerical. So, those are the items I just wanted to share.
Well, thank you. Item number seven, superintendent comments.
Okay, I do have a few items this evening and I'm, I'm gonna try to move through them quickly. I have also attached, uh, not attached, but including, included a copy of, uh, my superintendent's update for February. Uh, in the update, the dates are identified for various meetings and things that I will be attending. A couple of, um, a couple of, of dates that I wanna make sure the board is aware of. As Mr. Lumpkin said, the, uh, Hall of Fame introduction, and he may speak to that a little bit as well. Hall of Fame, Athletic Hall of Fame induction and banquet is tomorrow evening. And the induction ceremony is Saturday and they will be inducting, uh, the Hall of Fame recipients during the basketball game. And that's on the seventh and eighth. Tomorrow, uh, I will be attending, I think, Ms. Allen, you'll be attending the legislative briefing with the Montgomery County E S C. This briefing, briefing will include, uh, our local representatives and state representatives, local representatives, state representatives. Uh, and, you know, the, the issues of, I'm sure, budget, the governor's budget will come up and a variety of other things. Uh, some of these, uh, requirements for these new house bills, et cetera. And then, uh, don't forget about those that have, um, those that have committed to the Business Advisory Council Dinner on the nineteenth. That date is in there. Also, a reminder about conferences are next week, the tenth through the thirteenth. And then we are off for the conference comp day and president's day on, on Friday and Monday. Conference days, Monday and Wednesday, the E L C, excuse me, Monday and Wednesday, high school, mad- middle school at E L C. Madison Park will have their conferences. Tuesday and Thursday, Westbrook Village will have their conferences. And conferences all usually fall between three, three-thirty to seven on those evenings. And then we, the staff has, the building staff has that Friday off for their comp day. Also, in the building dates, all of the black history programs are denoted with their, with their times and some of the things that they're doing. I still need to get a little more information from the high school about, uh, what, what the time is. But all of those dates are, are identified in, in the, uh, in the update. Any, any questions on those?
Ram motivation, do we know what time that is at Madison Park? And then the Black History Parade.
Uh, rent the, the, that's one-third, that's one-third, yeah. And the Ram Motivation Assembly, that will be one-thirty. And the Black History Parade will, I believe, be about one-thirty as well. I'll, I'll secure those, those times for certain, but, yeah, there, those are usually right before, um, right after lunch, right after lunch. All right, next item is, for discussion is, uh, I provided a copy of the bullet points for the upcoming biannual budget from, uh, from our governor and some of the O S B lobbying points that I think the board should be aware of. That's identified as document F. The, um, the governor has, um, has, uh, gotten his budget together and sent it to the, to the House and the Senate. And I'm sure they're gonna have some, some contentious. And I'm sure they're gonna have some, some contentious debate. Uh, Mike DeWine, uh, whether you agree with his politics or, or not, has always kind of been consistent when it comes to funding, uh, funding for schools. So, um, as of right now, uh, we, we see consistency. Now that we don't need, know if that consistency is gonna be a drop or, or, um, or an increase, but we see some consistency. But there's a list of some other things that, um, that we want to make sure we are, you guys are aware of with regards to the, the OSBA when it comes to, um, you know, when it comes to funding public schools and some of the important issues that, that, um, that are on, that are in the budget, excuse me, that are part of this budget. All right. Next is the invitation for the Hall of Fame banquet. Mr. Lumpkin may speak to that. That's just the invitation that we received that's denoted as G. And that just gives you the location, the time, the location. We talked about that a little bit. Next, uh, is CCP info. Uh, this would be identified as letter H in your, in your, your, um, stack of documents. And I'm doing the best I can to try to save trees, but sometimes you got a lot of information I want to share with you. This is a, this is a parent square that I sent home to, to the high school and middle school, uh, parents yesterday. There were, I think roughly about twelve hundred connections. We had, um, a informational meeting in conjunction with Sinclair Community College, where we had a representative from Sinclair come and have, uh, have a plethora, that, that the individual had a plethora of information with regards to college credit plus. We sent, uh, we sent several communications home. We sent a, 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 a parent square. We sent a document home. And, uh, for, for you guys that don't know, college credit plus is the program that students, grades seven through twelve, have the opportunity to take college courses. And some kids, if they're committed to the program, they, um, they can finish, graduate high school with an associate's degree. We had eight parents show up, eight families show up, and, and I wanted to make sure that the families knew that that wasn't, that wasn't enough. Uh, we need, we need more participation. We need more, uh, folks hearing this information because we have the same things other, other schools have. We have the same opportunities other schools have. We have college credit plus here in our district. We have it with Sinclair. We're also gonna be partnering with Central State for college credit plus. And we've got, gotta get our families in here to hear this information. So there will be another informational meeting on February eleventh. This one will be via Zoom, so we're trying to, you know, we're trying to go a digital route to make these connections as well. And we're gonna send as many, um, as many communications as we can to remind folks how important it is to, uh, to get this information because, uh, you know, kids, I, I know one kid specifically who, uh, started school as a freshman this year and is already forty-five percent complete with their, with their requirements for their college degree because they took nineteen or twenty hours through college credit plus. So it's a great opportunity. It's free of charge, and we've got to get our kids, we've got to get our kids that are, that are planning on moving on to higher ed to take advantage of this opportunity. So eight families, I shared that with the, with the, uh, with the, with the, with the parents and said that this is not enough. We need, we need more people. And also included in there, the link for the college promise program, which is what Ms. Allen made reference to, where kids, first generation college students, if they complete the application requirements, they get college paid for for free. Four years of higher ed paid for for free, and that's what Ms. Allen was making reference to with Ryan Allen. Uh, so we're, we're doing, doing our due diligence and we're gonna keep pushing. We're gonna keep pushing. We're gonna try to meet them in different platforms. But we've got to make sure that our parents are aware and take advantage of these opportunities. Okay, and the last thing, I know I've been talking a lot. Mr. Brenner, we've got a couple of great things going on in the district, and I, and I always want to make sure we, we highlight, we highlight some things. And again, I'm trying to save color copies. My color copies cost, cost a lot more money than, than people, people know. So the first thing that we have up there is we had three students. Can you see? We had three.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we're trying to utilize this technology. Yeah, we got this technology. We're trying to use it. So we had three students complete in the, compete in the future, what is it? The future, tomorrow's artist today exhibit at the Middletown Arts Center in Middletown, Ohio. We had three high school students compete. Uh, and then we had one young lady. Uh, her name is, what is this young lady's name? Her name is Amaya, Amaya Simpson? Amaya Smith, excuse me, Amaya Smith. She got honorable mention with regards to her, her, um, her art project, which was a, a, a self, I don't know what you call that. It's, it's kind of, um, yeah. Yes, this was all, there, all of the art projects were, that's, that's Amaya right there. She got an honorable mention. And, uh, she did a, a self-portrait, and, uh, she was, uh, she was awarded, I believe, with a gift certificate. And those, those self-portraits, those art projects will be on display in Middletown, I believe, through the end of the month. So those are some of, you know, and a lot of the stuff is abstract and, but it, it's, you know, it's art and it's, and it's beautiful in its sense. So, uh, there was one more, Eric, Mr. Brenner, I'm sorry, can you? The one with the, uh, yeah, that, yeah, that's an abstract. And then there was another one up there. So, so three art students participated in that, and, and we had our kids representing us in Middletown at this, as an art show. And if you, if you can see the details of that, that, that thing right there is amazing. You know, she, and I believe she freehand, she did that freehand with, uh, with, uh, you know, various colors. So that's one. The next thing that we have is the, what you got up there next, Mr. Brenner? This is a group of thirty, twenty-five to thirty students that, that the high school and members of the high school staff took to Kentucky State University this past weekend for their college preview day. And of those twenty-five students, twelve of them were accepted on-site and offered scholarships. So, uh, we took, uh, those students, uh, that group of individuals, that group of staff members in the front, and all of those are our kids. They had a, a great time. They played, uh, Central State, which I did not know Kentucky State and Central State were rivals.
Rivals.
And it was a, a very heated game and the, the band was playing and the cheerleader. And our kids had, our kids had a ball because they got an opportunity to see, uh, to see that, um, to see that campus and to see that rivalry. And a lot of people don't, you know, they don't know when you get to moving through those hills of Kentucky and you, you just pop up on this beautiful campus. You get an opportunity to see, uh, a really, really nice college campus. All right, next one, Mr. Brenner? I got a lot for you. This is a group of students, high school seniors. Olivia Christmas, Christman, Erin Metcalf, and Demarcus Anderson got to attend the Central State Annual Royal Luncheon held at Central State Dayton Campus. What this is, is Central State University invites, uh, class officers, homecoming kings and queens, and any student that are, uh, that, that have some type of representation from the district to meet and mingle with the homecoming court from Central State University, their class president, and et cetera. So we had four, three or four students represented there, had a great time, got, got to meet the, uh, the, um, student body at, at Central State University and enjoyed a, uh, a full day of activities and, and, uh, and, uh, just an opportunity to meet some kids who are, who are doing some great things on the college campus. And last, Mr. Brenner, this is, this one is really exciting. Today at Westbrook Elementary, they had their science fair. And I got an opportunity to go over and view a lot of the projects. The voting for the science fair will be over tonight. And we're going to bring the winner of the science fair here next meeting and let them, the winner and the, the runners-up. And let them, let the winner explain their science fair project and explain what they, uh, what they did. Learned a lot about how gummy bears, uh, how gummy bears react to different chemicals and which popcorn pops faster and, uh, it, it was, it, it was an outstanding, outstanding, uh, display of, of our young people and, and some of the things that they're doing. And though, that's a picture of all of the projects that were, that were displayed in the gym, uh, today. So I got a chance to walk around and kids explaining to me what their project was. Uh, it was real cool. It was pretty cool. So, so we'll get that, get those young people up here next week and, and they can kind of talk you guys through, yeah, through what they did. And that's it. I know that was a lot, but I wanted to make sure we shared it. And I encourage all of our buildings to, to send this stuff like this. We're gonna try to utilize our technology a little more so you guys can get a chance to see some of those things. But, um, those are some of the things that we had going on this past week. Thank you, Mr. Brenner. That's all I have.
Thank you so very much. A lot of information. Nice. Now we're on board comments. We have Mrs. Carrington.
Um, as always, thank, thank you all for coming out. I know it's a late night. You guys have been here all day, so thank you guys for coming out. And I just want to piggyback on something Ms. Allen said. Um, congratulations to Ryan Allen. It's always good to see our Trotwood students go on and we do great things after they leave here. It just shows that we do have the best and the brightest also in Trotwood. Congratulations to Amaya and all of the students who entered, were entered into the Middletown, um, art show. Um, I do want to say thank you too, and she's not here tonight, but Cherry Brown. Last week was a very challenging week for the Trotwood community. And you don't often get to see people outside of work still caring and doing their job. Um, she showed up at one of the services for the young men, and I mean, she was so supportive of those children. I mean, basically hugging, hugging them, just being there for them. And it was just good to see that her job don't stop and end inside this school building. Um, so kudos to her. And, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so very much. Mrs. Kilgore?
Oh, thank you. I'm still learning my way, way around, um, but since we last met, I, I've attended, um, a workshop, the OSBA workshop, uh, in January. Very informative, mute onboarding for, uh, board members. So that was, uh, it was really, really informative. And then I did last week the, um, the M instances, the board member instances, and I brought you all that material, so.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Lumpkin?
Congratulations, um, to the students that were recognized, um, at the art gallery. That's always good to see. It's good that our students got the exposure in Kentucky State and in Central State. And then to see Ms. Allen, uh, celebrate her degree. And, um, to piggyback on what Luana said about Ms. Brown, she was actually at all three funerals. Um, and hugging students at all three funerals because one of the students that passed wasn't our student at the time, but was in the past. And, um, Cherry and I got a chance to, to meet and talk with some of the families. And just the extremities of that day, um, after I left, it was a really heavy day. So I left and then I went to youth basketball and got to hang out with some of the younger kids. But you just get to see, you know, sometimes that life cycle ends far too soon. And so we're still praying for our students and everything. Um, we do have a Hall of Fame induction banquet tonight hosted by myself and former Trotwood alum Zach Logan, um, in conjunction with our athletic department. So we're honoring six, uh, six new honorees tomorrow. Board of Education has been invited. Uh, so we're excited about that. Uh, I would like to issue a challenge to our parents in the coming weeks. There are things that are on the calendar that are very important. The last time we had parent-teacher conferences, we, um, had twenty-five percent participation from our parents. And we should try to beat that number. Um, it's very important for you to come to the building, and education really starts at home. And if you, you get a chance to come and talk to the kids, to your kids' teachers and, and see what they're doing in the classroom, and they see that, that next level of engagement, it can help our teachers make a difference with their students.
Thank you. Vice President Simmons?
Again, I will just concur with, uh, Mr., Ms. Carrington and Mr. Lumpkin. Um, great job, students on the art exhibitions. Great job, Westbrook students on your science fair products, projects. Looking forward to next month, um, um, with a winner tonight to be considered and having a winner and a runner-up present to us next month, so looking forward to that. Um, just the missed opportunities with the driver's program and the FASPA, uh, parents. Let's just do a little bit better with that, um, as the staff and the board. Uh, we, we can do so much and offer and have the programs available. But if we don't get parents to sign up for those programs and provide our students with the information needed to complete the FASPA, um, it's not, it's not all on us. So we can, we can lead them to the water, but we can't make them drink it. So we have to hold our, our parents to some accountability. So parents, um, I challenge you to, um, help your students to that next level so we can have, um, more Ms. Allen. So, um, I'll just leave you with that.
Thank you. Um, as previously mentioned, especially from Mr. Lumpkin, um, the Trotwood community has suffered, you know, several losses in, of a, a past week or so. And I would like to make sure that we have ongoing resources for our students because grief doesn't, isn't just for just one day. Um, it can hit at any given time. And I just want to make sure that we still have resources available to our students. Um, I want our students to know that gun violence, ha- mishandling of guns is final. So I would just challenge our parents to make sure that they are educating their, their, their students, um, to make better choices and to surround themselves with positive people as much as possible. Um, I also wanted to congratulate all our honorable students and all of our students who's putting forth every effort to keep going, keep going. So we want to encourage all of our students for that. Um, also, I wanted to make the parents, this, this is for the parents. Please get your kids to school on time. Uh, when they're absent or late, it affects their, it, it affects them from receiving instructional strategies and instruction timing. So I would encourage everyone to, all the parents, to get your students on time. Also, if the parents are, you having any issues, any concerns, I would ask that you reach out to the principal, the superintendent, or even the board before you go to social media. Because once you post something negative on social media, most people take it and run with it. Please be factual with whatever it is that you're posting. Or come, like we said, you know, the principals are available. Um, all, everyone in the board is out, board members are out in the community. And you can come talk to the board members, the superintendent. But just be mindful of what you post on social media because everything is not factual. So I just wanted to leave that with our parents and challenge our parents to do better with your students. Like, um, Vice President Leon said, it's a lot of missed opportunities, a lot of missed opportunities. We have good things going on in our district, and we want to continue to promote our children who are doing well. And, um, I want to congratulate the parents who stick with their kids and make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. But I challenge the ones that are not. And that's all I have.
I do have one more. I'm, I'm gonna go ahead. I'm sorry.
Is the mental symposium at the middle school this Saturday?
That's what I, that's exactly what I was gonna say. So, so I, I forgot to mention that. So Officer Derek and, um, uh, I believe the Goodwill Easter Seals, there's a group, the, um, the Teen Summit. It will be Saturday, uh, morning. It's from eight till one-thirty or two. Eight to two, there'll be a lot of, uh, different breakout sessions. And, uh, Officer Derek will be, uh, providing lunch and breakfast and, you know, looking forward to a, to an event. We have a, um, we have an administrative meeting that morning. And then once, once I, I leave the administrative meeting, I'll head over and spend, spend some time over there. But we're excited about that, and, and gun violence is, is one of the, uh, one of the, you know, the topics. Yeah, gun violence is insane, yeah. Yeah, one of the topics that, uh, that are going to be, be discussed in, in one of those breakout sessions. And I just, I just overlooked that when, when, when you said it, Ms. Cherry reminded me to make sure I mentioned that.
Well, I need a motion to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation.
demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official for the investigation of charters of complaints against a public employee, official, or regulated individual per V O E policy zero-one-six-six and O R C one-two-one-point-two-two. Action may be taken.
I second. Ms. Allen, it's been properly moved in second. Would you please call the roll? Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Ms. Kilkore? Yes, motion passes. We will enter into executive session at six forty.